... You have here text in there, so they qualify as a charitable organization. That's what I'm processing. Well, first of all, they're not an international center, so that can't do. They need to, number one, find people to sit on the board, and then they need to apply for funding from the way, and maybe...
Sandy Club. They'd be willing to take over Rum Burger Cemetery.
[laughing] Why not? That's a problem. I don't know if the historical society has it. They have no perpetual preference. They have, that was exhausted back prior to 2077. They have, but they did recently, I know, get a donation from the state. So people have named their wills, and they may do that. But, you know, they're really operating. I don't know what to tell them. They're not a band.
Well, I know what's wrong with them. Nothing. I know.
It's expensive. I know. It's like, I know. It's one thing for the city to supply the individual, you know, but the denied away could get them to the board. The person in the city, they're not going to be able to find people.
I assume that if you get some donations, they may have to hire somebody professional for lawn care.
They also need people to sit on the board. And I have that discussion with John. If Rob Mel is gone, they're not even sure. They know there are people not yet buried there, but they do not know when the last burial was, or if those people chose to be buried in the shush. But they are solely responsible. Cemetery does not have a license to bury. It is... It really... It wouldn't want the city to do that, because that would be like... And there's no way the county can stand for asking that.
Oh, well.
Oh, well.
I'll figure something else out.
Yep.
Do you know?
No.
Oh, yeah.
That's in your back. Oh, yeah. I gave him, you have to see this place. Well, but you have to see inside.
Yeah.
And he is, when he was broken into, because he's unarmed, he found that. He does not use his stove. He grills inside. But we gave it to him.
Really? I don't remember the case.
I don't know what to do. That's the one I had at five. I wanted, when he got promoted to, and we had to hire somebody to fix the car. And we went in, and then I liked that. It's for, oh, I don't have it. There's only, you know, it makes it, his stove does not work. And he cooks on a gas grill inside the house. Is that peculiar? Of course. Yeah. Yeah, there you go. But I have, I'm waiting, you know, the doctor will not say he cannot return. I don't know what to do with him. He's insisting that he's coming back. Obviously, next month, I'm going to, now that I've given him this key, he says his friends come to pick up his mail, but the post office won't deliver anymore because they consider the band a unit. So it's a mess. But of course, you know, I'm sure they're going to tell me, you don't have to get anything done. And any, yeah, right, the bathroom area does not tolerate in its own. I never got into it. I inherited him from a prior owner. He can't get his... Well, no, that part's not, the walker can't get to the, there's like a room for the walker. The man's been away. But he has a kid. Come on.
So Saint John's, my last...
He's the last replying board. Oh, and one more thing. There's no way there's eleven thousand dollars. Well, we have declined, we have processed the resolution, so that council will, and pass the resolution, sign the resolution.
Under number six. Yeah, number six.
Once you approve it, we'll all assign. And then we'll have, once the city seals it down, then we'll give a copy of that to the district. So that he can send it to... Because the entity exists, it exists beyond John. It exists. And all the individuals who are in... Have to pay for their own air. You know, they have to arrange for the opening and closing. It always becomes our... We can rush. Yeah. You just have to watch. Yes, I know. I'm sure you will. Oh, okay. I'm sure.
They come out, just like brothers do. At least he didn't throw him a shoulder, he just threw a pillow there.
If it's a 501(c)(3), is, you know, is there, and I have no idea, is there even grant money available with the Masons? Because I don't consider it, I can't verify it.
We could ask Joe if he had another.
I don't know what else to do.
Is that still historic? It's not a good problem.
Yeah, I didn't think so, because there are still people, there's still... There are people who... We have certified that there was nobody...
Didn't care.
For years.
Yes, I remember it probably left before off the house.
No, it wasn't. No, and I thought it was like half. Great.
It was big enough anyways. It's in the yard. It's almost like, pretty far. Was he big? Just Mary humor. Mary, she's married years ago. Joe, she's just... I always get stuck with her.
That one, on the sidewalk. Mary. He cut the grass.
Even after it moved, I would still come back and cut her grass.
Then the junkyard one, before I came, I mentioned, there are these holes in the coordinates itself where we do not give the height of fencing, don't give how far back, and they aren't from the road, things like that. So we're going to meet on the fourth for planning the layout, and I'll bring those issues to you.
Why is it my house? Right, because that's what we're getting.
Well, how about the plan?
About all of them.
How about the... Aren't there a lot of some or bets? Very good. Some or bets?
We pulled back in the seventies.
I know, and I know, but here's the one thing I do, which is not under the burial ground.
The rest are the service, or serve alcohol. Probably the best one.
Yeah, it's returning to what it really was.
What was the old B and M? C, I, B and M.
And the jarred bar?
The old B and M. There was something else in there.
There was the jarred bar when I was in high school. Julio. No, was it the jarred bar?
Had Julio's.
Julio's, yeah. Julio's flat. Work for P and M.
It was jarred bar.
The store was, Tommy Donlap, Tommy...
Oh, really?
And then somewhere along the line, the literal license.
Yeah.
Leading everybody, please rise for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First thing on agenda tonight is the approval of minutes, public hearing, 2023, CBG, September 11th. Council's wishes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion on floor, promptly second to approve the minutes for the public hearing, September 11th, 2023, regarding the CBG funding. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion. Fernando?
Yes.
Alkabak?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Reesinger?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
City council meeting minutes, September 11th, 2023. Council's wishes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion on floor, promptly second to approve the minutes for the city council on September 11th, 2023. Questions on the motion? We'll vote on the motion. Fernando?
Yes.
Alkabak?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Reesinger?
Yes.
Walsh? Yes. And finally, the work session meeting minutes for September 21st, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion on floor, promptly second to approve the minutes for the work session meeting on September 21st. Any questions on the motion? We'll vote on the motion. Fernando?
Abstain.
Alkabak?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Reesinger?
Yes.
Walsh? Abstain. Number four, registry of invoices presented, the auto draft, which was at fourteen thousand nine oh six eighty-one, general fund four oh one three twenty-five forty, and Penn Vest of two million seven seven four oh five one fourteen cents. Council's wishes.
I make a motion, we pay the registry of invoices. Second.
Okay, we have a motion on floor, promptly second to pay the registry of invoices presented. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion. Fernando?
Yes.
Alkabak?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Reesinger?
Yes.
Walsh? Yes. Public comments. Yes, sir.
Hi, and my name is Greg Gillough. I reside here in Dubois. I'm actually running for city controllers or writing candidate, and I do have a question for the council. Beginning each fiscal year, is there an audit plan prepared in conjunction with council, mayor, and approved by the city controller each year? Is there a recurring, is there a plan created to audit?
Yes, sir.
And what type of audits are being done? Are they compliance audits? Are they financial, revenue-based? Are there unannounced audits? Are all those things being conducted, or?
I wouldn't be able to speak to the type of audit it is. We do advertise for an audit each year. We do have one completed each year. I don't know if Daylink can weigh in on what type of audit they are, just financial audits?
It's a financial audit, yeah.
Okay. So we're not doing unannounced or compliance audits at this point?
Nothing at all.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any else?
Deb. Deb Nusseling. At the September 11th meeting, we learned that the five percent cable feed that's being paid to the city amounts to thirty-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars per quarter for a yearly total of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars. And I was curious, what account will these monies be placed in? And are there, is there any earmarking being done at this time for those monies?
They are put into the general fund for operating expenses, and we do not have any special earmarks for those funds.
Thank you.
Any else? Great. Number six, approval of municipal transfer of restaurant liquor license from Ark of Clearfield to the Public House on George Street LLC. Council's wishes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on floor, promptly second to approve, approve the municipal transfer of restaurant liquor license from Ark to the Public House on George LLC. We have a resolution prepared. The council will sign. It's resolution number three seven three two oh three three. I'll read this very quickly. Whereas, the act authorizes the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board to approve in certain institutes to transfer a restaurant liquor license across municipal boundaries within the same county regardless of quota limitation provided for in section four sixty-one of the liquor code, as in the city of Dubois. Sales of liquor and malt group beverages are legal in the municipality receiving the license. And whereas, the act requires applicants to obtain from receiving municipality a resolution approving the intermunicipal transfer to the restaurant liquor license prior to an applicant's submission of an application to the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. And whereas, the liquor code stipulates that prior to adoption of a resolution by the receiving municipality, at least one hearing be held, which we did tonight, for the purpose of permitting individuals residing within the municipality comments and recommendations regarding applicants' intent to transfer a restaurant liquor license into the receiving municipality. And whereas, an application for transfer filed under the act must contain a copy of the resolution adopted by the municipality approving the transfer of a restaurant liquor license into the municipality. Now therefore be resolved that the Public House on George Street LLC has requested the approval, the city of Dubois, for the proposed transfer of Pennsylvania restaurant liquor license number R one seven two six eight from Ark Restaurants LLC located eighteen oh two Daisy Street, Suite 300, Lawrence Township, Clearfield County, Clearfield, Pennsylvania. One six eight three oh to the Public House on George LLC for restaurant facilities within the city of Dubois to be located, excuse me, at twenty-nine South George Street, city of Dubois, Clearfield County, Dubois, Pennsylvania, one five eight oh one. With the understanding that the restaurant liquor license will be transferred to only that location. Further said, transfer must be approved at a later date by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board and be further resolved that the city of Dubois has held a properly advertised public hearing pursuant to the notice provisions of section one oh two of the liquor code to receive comments on proposed restaurant liquor license transfer and be it further resolved that the city of Dubois approves by adoption of this resolution to propose intermunicipal transfer of restaurant liquor license R one seven six two eight into the city of Dubois by the Public House on George LLC. Be it further resolved that transfers, designations, and assignments of licenses, I'm sorry. I think, okay, I'm sorry. Be it further resolved that transfers, designations, and assignments of licenses here under are subject to the approval of Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, fully adopted this twentieth day of September, 2023, during a reading of the city, of the council members of the city of Dubois, Clearfield County, Pennsylvania, and a lawful session duly assembled. This was submitted by our solicitor, Ms. Cherry. Any comments?
Your honor, and your members of council, this was the site of, it has always been the site of a bar, and previous bars located on that site have had liquor license, so it does not constitute a change in use, and certainly is, that site has always been accepted in the neighborhood and really has been an asset to the neighborhood.
Okay, council's wishes on resolution three seven three dash 2023. Look for a vote. Yeah. Fernando? No, no, any emotion?
Jim already made a motion.
Oh, okay.
Had already seconded.
Okay, there you go. We'll vote on the motion. Fernando?
Yes.
Alkabak?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Reesinger?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Welcome to the city.
Okay, recommendations for the aggregates, number, we'll do these individually. A, 2023 type A three anti-skid material. Recommendation from Mr. Nasuti is bucktail excavators at twenty-seven dollars and twelve cents per ton. Council's wishes on the first aggregate.
Motion to approve. I'll second that.
Okay, motion on floor, promptly second to approve the purchase of, from bucktail excavators at twenty-seven dollars and twelve cents per ton of type A five AS three anti-skid material. Any questions on the motion?
As one thing, did we still get with the township on this?
Yes, sir. These are purchased in conjunction with township.
To get a reduced rate.
Correct.
And from...
Bigger bulk, get us better price.
So from last year's rate to this year's rate?
Pretty similar.
Pretty similar, so not, okay. Not like we had the year before, where it jumped way up.
Correct. Nope, these are almost the same prices.
All right, thank you.
Council's wishes.
Motion to approve.
Okay, say in junior, I'm sorry. We'll vote on the motion. Fernando?
Yes.
Alkabak?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Reesinger?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
B, the 2023 type A S in material Woodlands equipment and supply at thirty-two forty per ton.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve B, C, and D.
Can't, gotta do them individually.
Try to do them individually.
And when you do it, I want you to be very, very clear on the record, and there's a reason for that. We had a lawsuit on this, the type A or the type A limestone two A. Please make it very clear, that's what you're approving.
We're doing the type A sand right now.
Right.
I make that motion.
Second.
Okay, motion on floor, promptly second to approve the type A sand stone material from Woodland Equipment and Supply at thirty-two forty per ton. Any questions on the motion? We'll vote on the motion. Fernando?
Yes.
Alkabak?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Reesinger?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Number three, type A limestone two A bucktail excavators in the amount of twenty dollars and ninety-seven cents per ton. Council's wishes.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, motion on the floor, promptly second to approve the purchase of type A limestone two A from bucktail excavators in the amount of twenty dollars and ninety-seven cents per ton. Any questions on that motion? We'll vote on the motion. Fernando?
Yes.
Alkabak?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Reesinger?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And finally, twenty twenty-three A A S H T O number eight bucktail excavators at twenty-six seventy-two per ton.
Motion to approve the H T O number eight from bucktail excavators at twenty-six dollars and seventy-two cents per ton.
Second.
Okay, motion on floor, promptly second to approve the A S T O number eight bucktail excavators at twenty-six seventy-two per ton. We'll vote on the motion. Fernando?
Yes.
Alkabak?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Reesinger?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Number eight, request the council appoint retired employee Mike Colborelli to the pension committee. Council's wishes.
I'll make that motion. I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion on floor, promptly second to approve the appointment of retired employee Michael Borelli to the pension committee. Any questions on the motion? We'll vote on the motion. Fernando?
Yes.
Alkabak?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Reesinger?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Number nine, request approval of the city of Dubois Police Retirement Plan Financial Requirement and Minimum Usual Obligation for 2024 in the amount of five hundred and fifty-one thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars. Council's wishes.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Okay, we have motion on floor, promptly second to fund the police retirement, financial requirement, minimum obligation, the MMO for 2024 in the amount of five fifty-one two forty-eight. Any questions on the motion? We'll vote on the motion. Fernando?
Yes.
Alkabak?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Reesinger?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And number ten, request for approval of the Dubois City Non-Uniform Pension Plan, the MMO for 2024 in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-six thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion on floor, promptly second to approve the request for the city's non-uniform pension plan, the MMO for 2024 in the amount of seven sixty-six two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Any questions on the motion? We'll vote on the motion. Fernando?
Yes.
Alkabak?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Reesinger?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Number eleven, resolution oh three seven oh twenty twenty-three authorizing the submission of the 2023 CBG application. Joe, want to comment on that?
The next three are just items that we have to do in order to submit our CBG application. You'll see, maybe we be goals, the fair housing officer, and then the actual application or resolution to submit.
Council's wishes on number eleven.
I'll make that motion. Second to that motion.
Okay, we have a motion on floor, promptly second to approve authorizing resolution number oh three seven oh twenty twenty-three, authorizing the submission of the 2023 CBG application. Any questions on the motion? We'll vote on the motion. Fernando?
Yes.
Alkabak?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Reesinger?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And along the same line, resolution number oh three seven one twenty twenty-three, statement of goals in compliance with the national program for minority and women in business enterprise.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion on floor, promptly second to approve resolution number oh three seven one twenty twenty-three, statement of goals in compliance with the national program for minority and women in business enterprise. Any questions on the motion? We'll vote on the motion. Fernando?
Yes.
Alkabak?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Reesinger?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Number thirteen, resolution oh three seven two twenty twenty-three, the fair housing resolution. Council's wishes.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, promptly second to approve resolution oh three seven two twenty twenty-three, the fair housing resolution. Any questions on the motion? We'll vote on the motion. Fernando?
Yes.
Alkabak?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Reesinger?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Number fourteen, trick or treat hours Tuesday, October 31st, 2023, from six to eight.
I have coordinated that with state and township. I have coordinated that with state and township. They're gonna be the same at their next meeting as well.
Council's wishes.
Motion to approve. Second to that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, properly second to approve trick-or-treat hours Tuesday, October thirty-first, from six to eight P M. Any questions on the motion? We'll vote on the motion. Bernardo?
Yes.
Hockenbach?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Reeseinger?
Yes.
Walsh? Yes. Number fifteen, break-the-night event in the city park. Again, this is a yearly, uh, request. Council's wishes.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, properly second to approve break-the-night event in city park Friday, November twenty-fourth. Any questions on the motion?
What time at that night? Anybody know what that is? Typically, we have them right, she's right here.
Six P M.
Six P M, okay.
We'll vote on the motion. Bernardo?
Yes.
Hockenbach?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Reeseinger?
Yes.
Walsh? Yes. Number sixteen, gives me great pleasure to introduce Shirley Deruge, who is the, um, newly appointed executive director of the downtown Dubois Incorporated. Do you want to stand up and say a few words, Shirley?
Just thank you. I look forward to working with everyone, um, just to keep enhancing and beautifying our downtown and just seeing it grow and thrive, and thank you for looking forward to working with everyone.
Thank you, Shirley.
Thank you.
Can the council, any questions for Shirley?
If you need anything, give me a call.
Okay, thank you.
I know this is a big event coming up for you to kick off, so whatever you need, we'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Chief, anything tonight?
Yeah, just a little bit. I know I spoke this morning with Hockenbach and, um, Reeseinger in our Monday, or, yeah, the meeting this morning. I know you guys are considering and looking into the, uh, these lottery machine businesses or, uh, gambling machines. Me personally, I'd like to see you really look into it pretty, and whatever we can evoke on, make it pretty stringent for them, just to open up and get in there. I mean, they're open twenty-four hours now, some of them. They're all night long, people in and out. It's just a haven for, possible haven for activity that we don't want nor need downtown. And I, I would really, I guess, solicit you guys to try as hard as you can to make it hard on them to open up these businesses.
You did mention like a timeline on them, how late they can be open?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know if there's a timeline or not, it's something. I know the other night, Saturday night into Sunday morning, it went down, and they went down by the bank down there, the old bank building. It's like three thirty in the morning, I know, people in and out, and so, again, you know, I'm trying to get into people's business, but I think for our community, it's probably not what we want.
Mr. Reginald?
Welcome, Shirley, and we look forward to working with you. She's already stopped in and, uh, talked once, so we're, we're off to the right start, so welcome, and, uh, I know you can do a great job.
Thank you.
Anything?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Secretary?
Good, thank you, sir.
Mr. Bernardo?
No, thank you.
It's Hockenbach.
You can, uh, welcome, and, uh, you can always reach out to any of us, so.
Thank you very much.
Looking forward to working with you, Shirley.
Yes, looking forward to working with you again.
Congratulations, Shirley, on your appointment, and best, and best of luck to you, the guys that own the public house on George Street. Looking forward to that. When are you opening? Um, we should be open hopefully by the end of October.
Shirley. I don't have anything except that I have provided you with some sample ordinances for you to review. Uh, I do have one question that I want to address to the chief, but based on what you said, chief. The, these machines, and maybe I, I address it also to Mr. Lawhead, because you present a question. Are, are these machines that are, uh, subject to P L C B? Are these games of chance? I mean, games of skill?
Games of skill, if I understand right.
And there's no alcohol being served?
Well. Not supposed to, not supposed to be.
And there are in certain places, but that's all.
There are some bars that have them also.
But they do, they do.
That would be P L C.
Follow the open-close laws of P L C B, so.
Instead of these, just wherever they can stick them.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that information.
Mr. City? Yep, welcome. Welcome to the community public house, and let me know if you need anything, Shirley.
Great, thank you.
Ditto. Welcome, you're welcome, guys. With that, I ask council for motion, sir.
I'll make that motion. Second to that motion.
Motion on floor, property second to adjourned time three. Any questions? Vote. Bernardo?
Yes.
Hockenbach?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Reeseinger?
Yes.
Walsh? Yes. Thanks, everybody.